Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular scheduled council meeting for Wednesday, February 21st, 2024. Let the record show that all councils are present except for Counselor Whitney. Ads and deletes. Delete Department and Committee Reports 3A, 3B, and 3C. Add bid quotes 1E and 1F. Add license and permits number 7 and number 8. But I have approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Counselor Schweiger.
Support.
Support by Counselor Bayless. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Can I just go back to the delete Department and Committee Reports?
Yes.
It's actually 3B, 3C, and 3D, not 3A. That's my mistake. Thank you.
So 3B, 3C, and 3D.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay, we're back to, uh, any discussion on approval of the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Move on to approval of minutes. Approve the minutes of the regular Hibbing City Council Meeting of February 7th, 2024. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Fossil. Support. Support by Counselor Hildebrand. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Approve the minutes of the Hibbing City Council Workshop Meeting of February 7th, 2024. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Schweiger.
Support.
Support by Counselor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We'll move on to consent agenda. Approve the accounts payable dated 2/15/2024, checks number 176633 through 176741 in the amount of $856,483.13. Two, approve city payroll for pay period ending 2/9/2024, checks number 168905 through 1686915 in the amount of $570,370.76. Three, authorize Mayor Pete Heiduk to proclaim Thursday, March 14th, 2024 as AAUW Hibbing Branch, American Association of Universal Women in Hibbing. Four, authorize a posting for summer students in the city services cemetery, library, departments. Five, authorize a posting for three seasonal maintenance positions for the city services department. Six, authorize the hire of Jake Warner... Warner... Warnerwitz? For the full-time captain training officer paramedic position with the Hibbing Fire Department effective February 26th, 2024. And I apologize to Jake for probably slaughtering his name. Seven, authorize promotion of Carter Salas to engineer and paramedic with the Hibbing Fire Department effective February 26th, 2024. Accept and place on file the January 2024 Hibbing Police Department Activity Report. Nine, approving executing the workers' compensation quote with the 1,000 deductible premium option. Ten, approve the one-year insurance brokerage service agreement with USI Insurance Services in the amount of $28,080. Eleven, accept and place on file the arbitrage compliance report for the 4,610,000 Geo Bonds Series 2018A. Twelve, offer resolution for number 24-208 to appoint elected judges for the 2024 Presidential Nomination Primary, Primary, and General Elections. Thirteen, approve the payment of hourly wage of $14 per hour for head election judges, 13 per hour for regular election judges during election judge training and time served on the election days. Fourteen, declare the M100 election machines, five metal boxes, five and suitcases, 11 as surplus or disposal. Fifteen, set the next general, next regular meeting for the Wednesday, March 6th, 2024 at 5:00 PM in the Hibbing City Council Chambers. Sixteen, set the next city council workshop for Wednesday, March 6th, 2024, following the regular meeting in the Hibbing City Council Chamber. Previously approved items at February 7th, 2024, authorize the Hibbing City Council to attend the Habitat for Humanity Dinner on Thursday, February 29th, 2024 at the Mountain Iron Community Center. Wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read and published.
We have a motion by Counselor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Counselor Hildebrand. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We move on to public forum, and we have nothing candy for a public forum? So at this time, we'll move on to Department and Committee Reports, and starting us will be Finance Director, Treasurer, Ms. Muller.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members. For item A, I'm asking City Council to approve the agreement with Bond Trust Services Corporation. BTSC is an affiliate of Ellers. They would be designated as paying agent, registrar, and transfer agent for our 2018, 2020, and 2024 bond issues. This would mean all of these bond issues would be housed under one company, and the debt service payments would be billed and paid to one place. By executing this agreement, we would be terminating our existing arrangements with Northland Securities for the 2018 and 2020 bond issues. I am requesting council to approve the agreement with BTSC for the paying agent and registrar services.
Okay, hearing what Ms. Muller had to say about approving BTSC as our paying agent, wishes of the council.
I'll make the motion to approve.
We have a motion by Counselor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Counselor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. B, you know.
Item B is a resolution providing for the issuance, sale, and delivery of $1,935,000 of Geo Bonds Series 2024A. And Nick Anhut is here from Ellers this evening to go over the bond sale results with you.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Nick Anhut with Ellers and Associates, and here to discuss the results of a bond sale that was held on behalf of the city this morning. I do have a presentation that I will go over. So just to recap, from last month, the council authorized a competitive sale of 2,130,000 of general obligation bonds to be paid back from future levy as well as sewer enterprise revenues. This was to fund a variety of different equipment purchases that the city was undertaking and will complete this year. Our estimate of the financing was a 3.65 interest rate, looking at the market environment for interest rates at that time, and it did assume that the bonds would be rated under the city's credit rating of double A that it has maintained for many years. To date, we have had an updated credit discussion with Standard and Poor's, led by city staff as well as myself, and I'm happy to say that the rating was affirmed for the city, so your double A credit rating is locked solid. They did provide a report. It indicated a stable outlook, meaning that when they look ahead in their crystal ball for the next two to three years, they don't see any need to change or any kind of negative pressures that would lead them to believe that that rating would be lower than that level. So they certainly evaluated all of the city's financial metrics as well as economic activity, and determined that, you know, in combination of the city's past prudent financial practices, stable operations, and maintaining very high reserves, they saw fit to maintain that double A rating. So congratulations on that front, and that certainly helps the city access the capital markets, receive a lot of bids, and potentially low interest rates. We also helped prepare offering documents that were circulated to the municipal bond marketplace for bids that were opened at 10:30 AM this morning, and I will go over the results of those. Just to highlight kind of the trends in interest rates over the course of the last year, we did see a spike all the way through November of last year, kind of a, maybe a 10-year high, but that has alleviated over the course of the last couple of months. And so on the far right-hand portion of the screen, you do see kind of where the indexes are today. You know, this is not exactly in a great indication of specific to Hibbing and where your tax-exempt financing would land, but it is a kind of a measure of the market as a whole. We have seen rates kind of creep up over the course of January and February from a low point that was seen just prior to year-end of last year, but still at levels that are fairly low. And so with that, we did receive five bids this morning on behalf of the city. The winning bid coming from Baird, an outfit out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, providing an indicated rate of 2.8089%, so very low rate compared to the 3.6 estimate that we were putting forward conservatively. You can see the four other bids that were provided. These are from a variety of different underwriting and broker-dealer firms from across the country, and the spread between the low and the high bid that came in from Northland Securities is about a third of a percentage point, the 33 basis points. With the low bid from Baird, we are actually going to be able to reduce the principal size of the issuance down to 1.935 million dollars. That is due to a re-offering premium that was included within their bid as well as lower final issuance costs, all of the different fees involved in the transaction. This amount is still going to be able to fund all the different equipment items that I put up on the slide before that we are anticipating financing, but just at a lower principal amount. The final adjusted true interest cost calculation is at 2.8057%. This is about 0.84 better than the pre-sale estimates, and if you want to compare those, it results in about $100,000 less in debt service paying payments that you'll be making over the course of the next 10 years while you pay this debt back. And so that is a sizable chunk of change, and we certainly would recommend moving forward and accepting the bid. There is an updated resolution that was prepared that did incorporate the terms and payment schedule from the proposal from Baird, and it is incorporated within the resolution for the city council to consider this evening to provide for the issuance, sale, and delivery of 1,935,000 of general obligation bonds Series 2024A. This, should the council move forward and adopt that, it would accept the proposal from Baird, and then we would schedule a closing to occur on March 14th, and that's when the funds will be wired into the city's accounts to make payments on the equipment. Very good results on behalf of the city, and congratulations. We certainly recommend moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that positive presentation. Okay, hearing what was just discussed and presented, wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Counselor Hoffman-Sockman. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Tina, great job. Okay, we'll move on to City Service Director, Mr. Arora.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Tonight I have Resolution 240210, and this would be authorizing the permission to apply for and accept funds from the state of Minnesota, the LCCMR grant program for Kari Lake Recreation Area. This is the same grant we went after last year that we were unsuccessful on, so we're gonna give another crack at it and alter up our, um, our form a little bit, and hopefully this time we can get an interview at least and move forward in this process. So just looking for more ways to create some outside funding to finish off this project.
Very good. Hearing what Mr. Arora had said, looking for permission to apply for additional funds. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Schweiger.
Support.
Support by Counselor Hildebrand. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thanks.
Thank you.
We move on to Community Economic Developer, Ms. Olavanti.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight before you, I have one item. A request to approve the pre-development agreement between the city of Hibbing and Jets Enterprises. That is in the, uh, in the audience tonight. This is for city's strategic objective, core strategy, vibrant economic hub. Jets Enterprises is entering into a purchase agreement for a commercial property located on Highway 37 in Hibbing, and the land is not currently accessible from a public street. This fact is holding up the appraisal and therefore financing for the project. The business expansion that their desires of undertaking will substantially increase the estimated market value of this parcel and thereby the tax base of the property. They are not able to undertake the purchase of this property without assurances that the city will assist as much as is practicable with applications to the IRS Department of IRRR and without assurances that the city will assist as much as practicable with the extension of a frontage road or access to that property. The city has been working with the Minnesota Department of Transportation to come to agreement on extending the frontage road in their right of way. However, they do not have a process to agree to such extension in an expedient fashion. Since the city wants to assist this project in purchasing this land, and the city owns adjacent parcels described in your packet, we are requesting that the city allow for temporary or permanent easements as needed to assist them in accessing that, their parcels and aid in the development.
Okay.
And I know Mr. Arora is here in case you have any questions about their development.
Okay, council, hearing what Ms. Olavanti had to say, pre-development agreement between the city of Hibbing and Jets Enterprises. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Counselor Hildebrand. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes?
If I could just point out, Betsy's presentation is right on. Since the time that we drafted the initial agreement, we were advised by Jets that the property that is going to be acquired by is Jets Properties LLC. As compared, they're running a business as Jets Enterprises, so that's why the pre-development agreement in the packet is Jets Properties LLC, but it's, that was just the change because they're gonna hold the property, and that's who we'd be entering into the agreement with, because that would be the owner.
The property owner. Yes. Thank you, Eddie.
Yeah.
Very good. That sure, do we want to amend or just?
No, the, the...
The agreement itself reflects Jets Properties. I think the, this part of the introduction just didn't get modified.
Very good.
Just to be clear, where about is this?
It is the property right next to Frieb's Gym on 37, in between our, the suburban lanes, the old property that we own and Frieb's. There's the square of property that is not accessible until we allow for some way to access it.
So was this brought forward to the planning and zoning in any manner?
For...
Or I was just, I was just wondering, do they have anything to do with any of this, if it's an extension or something for the road?
At, well, at this point, because the road is not planned, no, but at the point that we would need to do any kind of, you know, extensions or zoning, you know, anything that would go through them would still go through them.
Okay.
We don't own this property, so we're not selling it, which means they don't have to approve the sale.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just allowing for, for a potential easement at this point so that they can purchase. At the point that the easement would be defined, then yes, it would go in front of zoning.
Okay.
Does this property border 41st too? Between 41st and 37th?
No, it does not butt all the way up to that road on the backside, just 37.
Okay, very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion in a second. Wishes of council. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Betsy.
Thank you.
All right, we move on to bids and quotes. Chief, drink glass.
Evening, Mayor and council. I don't think I've ever had this many things on a council agenda before. The first item for you is the allow the purchase of nine sets of turnout gear. We have an annual replacement program in place. Instead of coming to you every 10 years to buy 50 sets, we replace, you know, five to 10 sets a year. This is a normal budgeted purchase between paid-on-call budget and career. The total is $31,712.67. We have, just like anything else, procurement problems. If we order them now, we hope to see them in anywhere between three to nine months. And this is the vendor that is the regional vendor for the turnout gear that we use.
Okay, hearing what Chief had to say regarding turnout gear, wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Counselor Hoffman-Sockman. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. B, Chief.
Much like what we chatted about at the last workshop, the item that we have before you is to allow the purchase of a 2024 Can-Am Defender side-by-side crew cab with tracks. We did solicit quotes from many different vendors, including the state contract. The most reasonable one was not the state contract, it was actually Raisin Grand Rapids. And considering the travel time and fuel to go there, this is, uh, this was the best deal. The Can-Am is $200 more than their quote for a Polaris side-by-side. The reason that we're recommending the Can-Am is because they have more standard features, air conditioning, windshield wipers, all these different things are standard. If we go to add those to a different brand, then it exceeds the $200. So that's why we ended up picking, we did look at Hondas, we looked at all kinds. Hondas don't have cabs that are factory, they're all, they're all aftermarket, and we called many different dealers, and they did not recommend them. So we stuck with the Polaris and the Can-Am. So I'm asking for the purchase of, for $37,924 from Ray's Sport and Cycle, and this is coming from that one-time public safety funds.
Okay, very good.
That we were allocated.
Okay, again, hearing what Chief had to say regarding the Can-Am Defender for off-road recovery, wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Schweiger.
Support.
Support by Counselor Bayless. Any discussion? You can't beat Can-Am. I mean, that is a good price, so...
Yeah, we, yeah, we're, and Ray's has been fantastic.
Well, for servicing, that's, that's a good thing, if you have any issues, so... Uh, no other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. C.
The next item on the agenda, also from the last workshop, is to purchase three trucks from Ranger GM or North Country GM. It is a state bid contract. The first one is a GMC one-ton crew cab with a snowplow. That is a first-response truck that we use every day. The total for that, we're estimating to be $60,644.55. I did put in the council RCA is that we're at the, we're at the point where as soon as the orders met, they hit send, you don't know if it's gonna be a 24 model or a 25 model, and we have no way to know until, until they hit send on the order. They do, they, historically, the last three or four years, they've had anywhere between a 2% and 5% increase in the price. If that does occur, we will come back, but we will save some of this one-time budget money to cover those things. All the dealers are the same, and we haven't, we'd really have no idea. So the sooner we get in the queue, the sooner we can, we can lock those in, but that's what the thing is in a 24 model, which is what we're hoping to get.
Okay, very good. You heard the chief talk about a GMC 3500 from North Country GM. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Counselor Schweiger. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. D.
The next one is gonna be a half-ton Chevrolet crew cab, also from North Country GM, state bid. We do believe that this price is gonna be locked solid because they do have the 24s, so we are anticipating that. And there will be some outfitting on all of these, but like I said at the workshop, we're gonna do those individually. We just save a lot of money. And the price for that is $49,588.66.
Okay, hearing about purchase of a crew cab from North Country, half-ton, wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Counselor Hoffman-Sockman. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. E, Chief.
And the last one is a GMC 3500 crew cab duly, just a cabin chassis. We're gonna be building a brush truck out of this, and we can build it individually, a lot cheaper than complete package. And the, and we're gonna be in the same boat with this 3500 as we were with the first until we hit send. You don't know if it'll be a 25 or 24 model. So, but currently, the, the base price of that is $48,256.69, stated.
Okay, looking for the 3500 crew cab duly. Wish of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Counselor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
And again, those are all from the one-time funds. Last for us, it is, it is actually merely coincidental, considering what happened to our colleagues down in the Burnsville area. We've been working on this project for a long time. We were, we were given the opportunity to get a grant from the Owens Foundation and the Hibbing Foundation to purchase some of these. And we're asking to purchase eight sets of specialized body armor vests and helmets to be used by our firefighter paramedics in an active shooter event. We have gone through several different vendors. We've had a lot of trouble really kind of narrowing this thing down, but we found a vendor out of Minneapolis that had been, our Twin Cities, that's really good to deal with. We have $6,000 in grant funding available. The other remaining funds is going to, we're, we're gonna take it from the one-time public safety funds. So we're asking to allow the purchase of, for tactical, eight sets of body armor helmets from Tactical Solutions in the amount of $12,944.
We're looking for support for the body armor. It's sad that we have to even put this before us, but it's the reality of the world, and looking for approval.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor, uh, Bayless.
Support.
Support by Counselor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Again, uh, we move on to City Director of Public Works, and Dave, were you speaking to this? Regarding electric actuator for waste treatment plant? Okay.
Mayor and council members, um, tonight I have two bids for, uh, to replace a valve and actuator in our filter building. We got 25 to 27 of these actuators that were put in in 2013, and this is the only one we've, we had any trouble with. We rebuilt it twice, and it just, it doesn't work, so I just want to buy a new one. And, uh, the price is $6,288. That would be through Duncan Company.
Okay, so what we're looking for, Dave is looking for electric actuator for the waste treatment plant. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Schweiger.
Support.
Support by Counselor Hildebrand. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Okay, back to Mr. City Service Director, Mr. Arora.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Looking for your approval tonight for the payment to AIM Electronics Inc. for the Memorial Building shot clocks. We had shot clocks installed for, on the baskets for the basketball tournaments coming up. New Minnesota State High School League rules went to a shot clock this year, I believe, was the first year, so we need to have those installed. We are sharing the cost upfront with the school district on this one, 50/50, so our, our split would be $3,112.50, so looking for your approval on that.
Okay, approval for AIM Electronic Shot Clocks. Wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Counselor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Dick, how many games, just curious, how many games do we have this year?
We have, I believe, seven.
Okay.
I think we have four the first, uh, first Saturday, then two, and then one. Yeah, so two on the following Wednesday, then one on Friday.
Your last championship game, then?
Correct, yep. Yep, we have, uh, quarters, semis, and finals.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on. Nothing for boards and commissions right now. We'll move on to license and permits. One, approve the raffle permit application request of Minnesota Forest Zone Trappers LLC to hold their raffle at the Hibbing Memorial Building on Wednesday, October 2nd, 2024. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Counselor Schweiger. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Two, approve the raffle permit application request of the Pregnancy Life Care Family Life Center to hold bingo at the Do U, April 3rd, 10th, 17th, 24th, 2024. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Counselor Hildebrand. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Three, approve the special event permit application of our Savior's Lutheran Church to hold their annual White Elephant Sale at the Hibbing Memorial Building on Monday, April 22nd through Saturday, April 27th, 2024. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Counselor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Four, approve the special event permit application of St. Louis County 07 and Senate District 07 DFL to hold their convention at the Hibbing Memorial Building Little Theater in Dining Room on Saturday, April 20th, 2024. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Counselor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Number five, approve the special event permit application of the Kiwanis to hold their annual pancake feed at the Hibbing Memorial Building Dining Room on Wednesday, April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hildebrand. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Six, approve the special event permit application of Iron Range Boxing to hold their boxing match at the Hibbing Memorial Building on Saturday, May fourth, twenty twenty-four. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Swiberger. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Seven, approve the special event permit of the variety of wheels, car, craft show to be held at the Hibbing Memorial Building on May eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries.